I am with D-Dot and we'll be talking today about the proposal for a transit center in the State Fair area. In addition to myself on this call, we have John. John, thank you for joining us. And he will be helping us out with sign language interpretation for anyone who needs it. So to give some background for today, on Tuesday, October 20th of this year, Detroit City Council approved the State Fair redevelopment, which includes a new D-Dot Transit Center. This $400 million redevelopment will bring 1,200 jobs and entrepreneurships, entrepreneurship opportunities to the area. A little more background. The development includes the land sale of the remaining 138 acres at State Fairgrounds, which is located at the Woodward and Eight Mile area in Detroit. It includes a 3.8 million square foot state-of-the-art Amazon logistics facility, the construction of a $7 million state-of-the-art Transit Center, as well as collaboration opportunities with Detroit At Work and Amazon to help Detroiters with the employment opportunities that are expected to come. It's important to note that no public subsidies or incentives went into this development. A little bit more about the community benefits. Again, 1,200 jobs, new jobs to Detroit. It's an estimated net income or net economic benefit to the city of Detroit for a 10-year period of $42.9 million. The new Transit Center, interior public roads with multimodal connections, including pedestrian and bicyclists. And then community improvement projects that will be led by the General Services Department. To give some background on previous engagement we did around this project, before today, D-Dot hosted three virtual workshops to allow for community to get up to date on where we are with this project, as well as just having some casual engagement to provide some answers and more context that people needed to make their informed decisions and give their input. We did some targeted outreach as well, reached out to quite a few of the employers in the current area, specifically at the Gateway Shopping Plaza area. We talked to a couple of community organizations that worked specifically with the ADA community. And then, in addition, again, this being a larger project, D-Dot has been and will continue to work with the other departments that are involved, as well as the mobility providers in the area, to make sure that we are all a part of this opportunity. Okay, so let's talk about the current Transit Hub. So currently, there is a Transit Hub in the area. It's located directly north of State Fair Avenue, right off of Woodward. And currently, it serves 60 dot bus routes and about seven smart bus routes. This space is made of special and the opportunity space for the buses to their route, we call it layover, as well as begin their route. There's a little bit of space for operators to take their break, but there's not much else really at the space. In addition, in the area, this current location does not provide much direct access to any of the area locations. So this is what it looks like on the map. And I'm going to use my cursor to help direct me through this. So up here, we have Eight Mile. Here we have Woodward. And then here we have State Fair Avenue. This is the current Transit Hub right off of Woodward. And the D-Dot routes that serve the hub are Four Woodward, 12 Conit, 17 Eight Mile, 23 Hamilton, 30 Libranoy, and 50 Four Wyoming. On the map as well, we've identified the local bus stops. Again, there are local bus stops on Eight Mile, Woodward, and State Fair Avenue, so people have the opportunity to board and deboard the bus prior to getting to the hub or after leaving the hub. That's an important note. To the west of the property, we have the Woodline Cemetery. And to the east of the property, we have Gateway Shopping Plaza, a little to the north, and then the State Fairgrounds site that we'll be discussing today. So what are the goals with this Transit Center? We have a few goals in mind, and the key ones are, overall, to just really improve the rider experience with a facility that promotes convenient and safe travel through the region, maintain connections. Again, we understand that the current location is a hub and it provides a lot of regional connections, and create a facility that promotes D-Dot's vision for riders and staff with useful future-ready resources and tools. So what that means is making sure with this facility, when we think about amenities, when we think about the functionality, and we think about how this facility is utilized, our vision for both riders and staff, again, is really to just make sure it's a great space, it's a successful space, and we're able to utilize it long-term. So, this map shows a little more detail about what's expected to come. And with this, we were able to find a proposed location with the information that we have, and we'll talk about that in a second. But just to go over the map, again, using my cursor, State, State Fair Avenue, Woodward Avenue, and Eight Mile to the north. The proposed Amazon facility is right here in purple. There's also two other development sites with this project that will be ready for a tenant to come in, so they don't have the tenant identified yet, but the space will be ready for that. Again, Gateway Shopping Plaza. And then these two blue spaces labeled Magic Plus are pieces of property that the city does not own, and therefore, they are not part of this development project. Right here, just east of Gateway Shopping Plaza is where we are proposing to put the Transit Center. A note here as well, it's about a 700-foot walk to the Gateway Shopping Plaza. And this is an opportunity for one of those roads that we were discussing earlier, to just make it safe and accessible for pedestrians once they get off the bus to walk to and from the shopping plaza, as well as throughout the entire property. Okay, so how did we get to our proposal? Again, understanding the overall placement and development of the site was key. Understanding the existing destinations and area resources, again, mostly Gateway Shopping Plaza, which houses quite a few businesses, including a Meyer. Ensuring connections to the existing routes are maintained. Again, this is both D-Dot and Smart. And then, understanding the traffic studies, as well as the entrances and access points to the space. So to go back again, what this gives us is an opportunity to enter the space, both off of Woodward Avenue as well as Eight Mile, and this really gives us an opportunity to ensure successful service, on-time performance, and reliability. So through the workshops, we were able to, again, have a little more open dialogue, casual dialogue, and we did take notes. So we have a few key points that we kept hearing, and we wanted to talk through that a little bit today. What we heard was connections and accessibility are top priority. People want to make sure they can still connect to their buses, and it's accessible for all riders. There were some environmental concerns. We heard some really good ideas around amenities and the functionality of the space. We heard things like people wanted to make sure there was bike infrastructure. We heard the suggestion of a Mogo Station. We heard some ADA suggestions that were really helpful. And then again, concerns that the ADA community needed to be engaged in this process. And so to provide an update, D-Dot is working and collaborating on this with Smart, as well as reaching out to other area of mobility providers to ensure existing connections are maintained and improved. We'll be working with B-Seed, who is taking the lead on the environmental impacts and mitigation efforts. B-Seed is the Building and Building Safety Engineering and Environmental Department for the city of Detroit. We are creating a focus group and planning a lot of future engagement to make sure, again, as we talk through amenities and functionality, this is a successful project that really takes into consideration what we're hearing from the community and what our riders need. And then we have been in contact with a couple ADA organizations in the city of Detroit to help us make sure we're reaching our ADA riders and taking all of their needs into consideration. From those workshops, we also gathered some suggestions on alternative locations. So these are some locations that we will be looking at, in addition to the one we proposed, as well as what we hear today. We heard, keep it close to Woodward. So these two locations here represent that feedback. We heard not on the historic buildings that are on the site, that was another one we heard about historic preservation I forgot to mention. So there is an opportunity for D-Dot to consider with the city, as they look at historic preservation, incorporating the Transit Center into these spaces and preserving the buildings. So there's a suggestion to move it a little to the west, closer to Gateway Shopping Plaza. And then we heard, move it a little further south, which would also put it a little closer to Woodward. Again, when it comes to community engagement, this is only the beginning. We will work on solidifying the location, which again, is the main focus of today's hearing. And then we will continue to engage you as riders, as community members, and as partners to ensure, again, this is a really successful state-of-the-art project that makes transit in southeast Michigan a lot better. This includes continuing to work with mobility, mobility providers, other departments, and a variety of stakeholders, including employers, again, community groups, neighborhood associations, and of course, our amazing transit riders. Next steps. So we will, this is our final hearing, we had a hearing earlier today as well, collect the feedback that we hear today, as well as the feedback we've heard from the workshops and from our other touchpoints in the community. We will solidify a location and wrap up our analysis on this. And then we will begin the efforts around the specifics. So then we'll get into the specifics around the routing, the build and the design of the space, as well as the functionality and services. So have no fear, more engagement is soon to come. Okay, and now we will open it up for public comment. So a couple tips first. Please remember, the focus of this hearing is the location. So what we would like to hear is if you have an alternative suggestion for where the Transit Center should go. If you have concerns, if you have any ideas, now's the time. Please state your name. This is being recorded. Again, we will be reviewing this to make our decision, and everyone will be allowed one minute to speak. If you don't want to give a public comment today, if you're not ready, if you would choose to engage with us in a different format, you have until November 27th, so you have about two weeks. We'll be collecting feedback in a few different ways. So you can send us an email of your thoughts and comments to ddotcomments@detroitmi.gov. Again, that's ddotcomments@detroitmi.gov. You can mail us directly a letter to the Detroit Department of Transportation, and that can go to the Executive Director's office. The address is 100 Mack Avenue, Detroit, Michigan, 48201. Again, that's 100 Mack Avenue, Detroit, Michigan, 48201. And then last but not least, you can give us a call. So customer service is available Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. You can call them. Please let them know if you call, you are giving a comment for the hearing. And that phone number is 313-933-1300. Again, that's 313-933-1300. More information can be found on our website, which is detroitmi, or www.detroitmi.gov/ddot. And then we have a specific web page dedicated to this conversation that we will be keeping up to date. We are getting questions, so we'll be able to have a fact sheet. There's one already posted to give some of the answers to the questions that we're hearing. And we will continue to post information, including flyers and engagement opportunities, as well as the fact sheet and other pieces of information at the Transit Hub itself. Thank you again for joining us today, taking time out of your Friday evening. We appreciate it. If you would like to give a public comment, there is a raise hand feature. I'm going to leave it on the map, so people have an opportunity to see the options while they're talking through their suggestions. Again, please remember you have one minute to speak, and my colleague, Iobami, will call your name, and you will be good to go.
It's going to be me tonight.
Oh.
I'm sorry, yep.
Let's start with, just go down the list. The first hand raised is Cunningham. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, hello. Just want everybody to know that the chat is open, which is a blessing. The password, there was no password required to get to this meeting. I just would have hoped that there was more flyers by D-Dot or informationals to the people at the State Fairgrounds about the meeting, the writers. Community groups are good, but the writers are very important. I suggest that the Transit Center be nearest to Woodward as possible to connect with the fast bus. That's my suggestion as regards to that. And not a diss, but a feeling. I surely miss Dan Dirks and the transparency. We never had a hearing with one minute to speak. It used to be two minutes. But besides that, I'm glad that the opportunity to speak is available. But again, no matter what, it used to be two minutes, no matter how many people were in line to speak. Everybody have a good night. Enjoy your weekend.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next on the list is Frank Hammer. You can unmute yourself.
Good evening. I want to second the remarks that were just made by Mr. Cunningham. This is sad that we only have one minute for an important hearing mandated by federal law. I wanted to address the question of location. First of all, what we're talking about is a replacement Transit Center, not a new Transit Center. It's a replacement. And the purchase agreement provides for mutually agreeable location. And I wonder when you will be going to be negotiating with the purchasers of this land, because it has to be a mutually agreed location, and I wonder what limits they're going to put on it. The Transit Center is geared for Amazon. It says that the Transit Center is not operational by the time the tenant is ready, that is, Amazon. The city will provide with, providing Amazon with interim transit capacity. It's very much an Amazon need, and I wonder whether that's going to determine the outcome of the location more than the input that you're getting from residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the list is Karen Hammer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I am representing in solidarity with the Transit Riders for Justice and the Warriors, Transit Warriors, and also State Fairgrounds Development Coalition, along with others. I did want to ask about the required equity analysis and the environmental analysis, where these will be accessed, and why aren't these available for this meeting? The equity analysis would address bus ridership and lack of any discrimination in terms of civil rights or ADA. Environmental analysis would address the vehicle exhaust and the safety of the bus riders as they're going through this area. Secondly, I do think that having it open 24/7 is important with navigators for riders and also homeless people who need service. Lastly, my question is, why do the developers and Amazon have more of a say over the location than the bus riders, or do they? And that's my comment. I guess that you are not going to answer these questions. Do you know when you will be answering them?
Thank you for your comment. We will have information updated again on the website, and we will be also posting that same information at the Transit Hub. So yes, because this is a public comment period, we are not responding, but we will, there's other opportunities to engage with us.
So on the website?
Yes, if that is your preferred choice, yes.
Or at the Transit Center.
The Transit Hub, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on the list, JW.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, I would like to object to the tyranny of the one-minute public comment. It's not a meaningful opportunity to be heard. It's a reflection of the whole way that transit riders have been treated in this process, like an afterthought, and folks couldn't be bothered. If people were truly interested in creating a world-class type of system, there would be consideration of the rail line next to it. I didn't hear anything addressed about that. And I would, there, when do you expect that we would hear anything about the connections with the smart buses? And I would like to know if, who got to sit down in the room at first, who came up with this design? And I want to reiterate my objection to the one-minute public comment and ask you why you will not allow us at least two minutes. Why will you not allow us the dignity of two minutes? And when you are public servants, and this is supposed to be about us, not about people's convenience, like very politely, we feel this way all the time that we're a complete afterthought. And where are the, why haven't the environmental impacts statements and all of that been looked at first? So again, I object.
Thank you.
Next on the list is a phone number ending in 393.
393, oh, the last three digits.
I think you can speak now.
Who, me?
Phone number ending. Go ahead.
Well, actually, that wasn't my phone number, but I will take this opportunity. My name is Larry Donald verse, and I'm a member, actually a volunteer with Detroit Speakers Platform Trans助件thing. And I do have a serious problem with the one minute, true enough. Actually, I believe it should not be public comment. You should be taking testimony, and the hearings should go out of a lonely text to get through it. That's one point. Two, I have serious reservations about this new Transit Center, or proposed Transit Center, being on private property. Who is going to be in control of the property? Should it not be on city property? I mean, is there a lease? If not, there should be one, where 100 years or 200 years at $1, period. And actually, I believe the Transit Center should go on city-owned property. And I have not heard any statements about a health assessment or health analysis for bus riders who will be going through there. You keep throwing out the number 30,000, 30,000, that's now. The bus ridership is down 87%, excuse me, 83%. Which means that those that will be negatively impacted if it stays where it is are significant. Therefore, it should be moved as far away from the heavy traffic as possible. The least amount of traffic appears on Woodward. Because there's not only the truck traffic, but people sleeping by, but there's the car traffic from what will be Amazon's place, and perhaps from the new tenants that will come after it, as well as the tow site is right there at a very large parking lot with heavy, heavy automobile traffic. And I believe that it poses serious health hazards to bus riders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next hand on the list is Sylvia Ordunio.
Hi, you able to hear me?
Yes, we can, hi.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm in a hardware store right now. So thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment, but like everyone else, you know, greatly disappointed in only the one minute. This is a serious issue and something that many of our communities have been talking about needing to have input on for a long time now. I'm actually a program manager over at the Greater Detroit Agency for the Blind. And while I'm not speaking on behalf of the organization, I can tell you that the many support groups that we work with there, the members of the blind community have been saying for a long time that they really need to have a say in how this new Transit Center is going to be developed and how it evolves. Right now, the concerns are that people with disabilities are always put at the back of the list in terms of how it is that their needs and issues are prioritized. And right now, there's not a lack of clarity around how this is really going to be a Transit Center of the 21st century. That really incorporates the needs for making it more than just a basic terminal. It's actually needs to be something that is more climate-controlled year-round, has 24/7 access, because the state of the economy and the way in which people are working requires 24-hour access in a safe space. Also, we need to make sure that, again, because this is going to be a high-traffic area, that there is something that is also connected between the Transit Center and between the shopping center, so that people in wheelchairs and with walkers that are using the terminal can also get across safely. Right now, there's not clear plan around what that's going to look like, or how it is that it's going to be integrated with the smart bus system. That really should be something that is part of the conversation before we're even having this one, because it doesn't make sense to have that, and then there's not an acceptable plan for that connection. So we really ask that you do a stronger needs assessment with the blind community, in particular disability community, and get their input before you move any further on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Steven. This is Steven with a V.
All right, so I don't have time to complain about the one minute, but I'm complaining. The Transit Center should definitely be closer to the Amtrak line, and perhaps all routes should use the same entrance to get to it, so that either they're all at Aitton Woodward, or they're all at the Woodward entrance to provide one transfer point for Smart. And I thought I was going to say something else, but I can't remember it.
Thanks, Steven. Can you just say your name for the record?
Yes, it is Steven, as has been stated a few times.
Thank you.
Okay, the next hand up is Paul Jones.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, hello.
Yes, hello, thank you guys for your time tonight and your time on this project. I think, first, I wanted to start by saying, this is not state-of-the-art. There's nothing state-of-the-art about Wi-Fi, nothing state-of-the-art about bathrooms, and there's nothing state-of-the-art about destroying historic structures to build something this mediocre. I think that there is an incredible opportunity for this site. This is a really important Transit Center, it's a gateway to the city, and it's going to be something that we can hopefully expand upon for transit. So we really should look at keeping it towards Woodward. I think there should be considerations integrating it into the Woodward streetscape itself. They're about 200 feet wide and a lot of unused lakes there. So, yeah, my suggestion would be that we really look at not destroying historic structures and keeping it Woodward if we can.
Thank you.
Okay. The next hand up is Stephen Boyle.
Hello, this is Stephen Boyle. I'm a resident of District 3 bordering on District 2. This is very close to home for me. I know that we have a huge, huge, huge digital divide in this district. Forty to 50% of the households east of me don't have internet in their homes. If you're relying on any electronic communications to reach these people, you're failing. If you're not posting bus notices on the buses that the people are taking about all of this information, such that they actually see the information, interact with the information, then you're failing in being the communicating and marketing people that you are. I don't know that this is a replacement of Rosa Parks Transit Center. I certainly hope not, that we're trading an $8 million investment to a $4.7 million investment. That would be a real hit on every transit rider and the public. I have no idea what the interaction between the public transit and services like Megabus, are they going to have an opportunity to pull in here? I think there's also opportunity for us to work with social workers around this center. If you, if this future development of right up close to the Transit Center doesn't include social work locations, I think we're doing a miss, an injustice to the social trauma that this area experiences. We have to start treating everybody as a care package. I don't know why we continue to throw people under the bus instead of elevate them and give them a ride on the bus. We need to, we need to find some freedom with the buses. We need to find better timing east and west on our buses. I really need to see that we're washing the environmental concerns. We need air monitors for PM 2.5. We also need the monitors for SO2. If you consider the vehicle exhaust in the area is going to be pretty bad. And I don't know if Amtrak is going to be investigating whether or not they're going to place a station along the railway near this or not. But I would say that moving the station over closer to the Amtrak rails might be a smart move, and it may need new roads created that actually work towards servicing that. If we continue to stay stuck in the mindset of what we see is what we're going to get, we won't have a Transit Center that has any future to it.
Thank you.
It's time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next hand up is James Sowalowski.
We're going to try that one more time, James, there is some static, so we're going to unmute you again. Hello? I think we have a connection error. If you can, yeah, it was, it was.
How about this?
Hey, there we go.
Okay, we got it. Okay, so just want to say thank you. I think that there is some real opportunity in talking about a Transit Center here. It's sorely needed. If you've been to the Eight Mile and Woodward Transit Center, you know that. I am concerned, as others, that this is not a joint call with Smart. And I'm concerned because the routing, although it's a separate conversation, really does have to be thought about in conjunction with the location. And if you're going to, the second point on that is if you're going to have a stop on Woodward for people to transfer to Smart, there has to be some consideration given as to how that site is going to integrate into the streetscape, as I believe someone else said, how it's going to be lit, and how it's going to be safe for people to transfer, especially at night. So definitely connections with Smart. I would really like to see before this final call is made, some sort of integration with them. And the second thing that I wanted to say is I've heard this comment about notice, about people being rightfully upset about the notice, on types of notice that are given for these meetings. My suggestion is that DDOT adopts a standard operating procedure drafted with riders through a community process as to how notice is going to be done in the future. That way, we can all be on the same page and come up with a plan that works for everybody that's done, executed consistently. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The next hand on the list is Claire Noack Boyd.
Hello, yeah, hi, it's Claire from Transportation Riders United, past executive director of Preservation Detroit. Yeah, as in the past, I continue to urge you to select a location that's not directly on top of a National Register of Historic Places building, or two of them. We've got quite a large site here. The center could be moved to, like, to the north, to the east. Or, yeah, as others have been saying, it could be selected with connectivity in mind. I mean, I know, I know you're speaking with Smart, but yeah, whether that's on Woodward, whether that's making the decision that maybe like warehouse space and parking for warehouses isn't the best use of space along a rail line that's served by Amtrak. But yeah, just not with this large of a site, and so much of it being as yet undetermined is not necessary to lose one to two widely beloved throughout the city National Register of Historic Places buildings for this project. I mean, yeah, and also, much as other preservationists have said, we could also explore putting the bus center into the Coliseum, maybe using the other half of the space for more retail, for restaurants, for public, for services. That could really be an interesting and awesome hub. But yeah, there are, there are so many ways this could go that, yeah, taking out one to two National Register of Historic Places buildings is not the only one, and it's definitely not the best one. Thanks again for your time on a Friday night.
Thank you.
Okay, the next hand up is Renard.
Okay, hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, hello.
Yes.
All right, good evening. I'm going to make a comment just to ensure that this Transit Center is a 24-hour Transit Center that is open and can balance the distance between routes that have to cover Eight Mile and then near Woodward. I also want to suggest that moving the site closer to the Woodward site, and even the entrance to the Coliseum seems to be a good idea, because as evidenced on this map, they can make a clear cut and go up north. But I'm opposed to, I just don't think that the site where it's vertical next to future development on the northern part, heading up towards Eight Mile, is a good spot. It's just too far away. The bus stops, if I were a resident on the state fair, that's going to be quite a walk to get all the way up to this new center. It needs to be moved closer to where it says "future development", which is east of the Magic Plus. That is going to balance the needs of riders off of Woodward. I have concerns about the connection to Smart. And then it will also balance the need for people to connect to the shopping center and then the proposed tenant facility if Amazon is actually going to be there with that. I can't comment on that, but I think that the Coliseum has enough space for social distancing and COVID-19, and we need services. I do not like this narrative that homeless bus riders need to be policed and surveilled. We need resources, we need to welcome people into our city. And I do like the comment stating CEOs run our system and also homeless people. Everyone has a right to use the system. And when we're moving this Transit Center, we need to slow this process down. This is moving too fast. And I even think that all of us, and even the community, don't even know what we want to advocate for, because there's unintended consequences to each proposed site. We need more deliberation and time in this process, and I yield back the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next hand up is Marguerite.
Hi, Marguerite, can you hear us?
Yes. Good evening. Like, I said before. The YouTube. To look at the two magic, magic. And that right behind each other. To make it one. One beauty and two beauty. That, that gets it before. About silver stuff. Yeah, yeah. And many to hold, yeah, yeah. But that people will use the silver stuff. And be able to use some, and some way to go. We make it, also, look at ways to communicate. Right, like the death and by. And people, people, people will use it before. A bit of the basis. To make sure that, that that whenever it is put to make sure it has standards. S I G N A G E. All over the place. The construction and extension. And with the Amtrak station. Where is the Amtrak is it going to be? For the people to get on the Amtrak station. And that and hope, my hope is that we make sure to communicate with each other. And we need, we need a copy of the blueprint. A copy, please. Of the blueprint. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Marguerite.
The next name on the list is Rochella.
Yes, my name is Rochella Stewart, and I'm a central DDOT bus rider. And I would like to say, this new Transit Center should be able to have an area separate from where the buses get off for the ADA community that do pair transit, metro, lift, freedom, uh, freedom ride, and for the smart buses that come through there for them, too. And also, the center needs to be open 24/7. You know, there's no reason it can't be open for 24/7, because late night, people are going to be out there. It's not going to be anybody else around. They need to at least feel safe and secure under surveillance building that's open. So if something happened, they can get in, make a call or whatever, if they don't have a cell phone or whatever. And also, it should always have access and be designed to meet the COVID-19 social distances, access to masks, hand sanitizer, et cetera. I just want to make sure that they have enough electrical outlets for people that have wheelchairs or motorized vehicles, so that they'll be able to charge those. And the same with, you know, your phones. 24-hour surveillance. Because people's out there with, nobody out there at nighttime. And I think I'm going to stop right there, and make sure that you get us out that air quality report. That's vitally important, there's too many people in this city. There are transit riders that have respiratory and different ailments where those exhaust fumes, if too high, can irritate and even astrobate the symptoms of the disease that they already have. I also demand, like I say, that the Transit Center remain open for 24/7 for bus riders who work late and overnight shifts, and to serve 24-hour bus routes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next hand says Galaxy Note 8.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Yeah, my name is Toya Watch, organizer of Charlotte Village Association. And I'm just getting this information, and I don't know the update on it, and I don't know if you got any information I can read up on for my community to let them know, is this a second bus station Detroit trying to put in? Or they moving to one from downtown? I don't know all the details of the situation. of the situation. And the bus stops, you know, can impact the routes of Conne, Eight Mile, Hamilton, Livinor, Wyoming. I don't know, you know, I need to read up on it and send this information out to my community. So is any literature I can get ahold of?
Thank you. So this is a public comment period, but I'll respond to that after the public comment is finished.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, right now, there are no hands up. Actually.
Else wants to give a public comment.
Please forgive me, Adrice Mutar.
Yeah, hi. This is Adrice. So I just had a few general thoughts that I wanted to give on the proposal so far. I think I want to echo the same, the comments that I heard about coordination with Smart. You know, I think it's a little bit of a challenge to move this site off of Woodward and keeping the fast route where it is on Woodward. And even just thinking long term. You know, I wonder what a lot of the routes that serve this site will look like in the next five, 10 years. Because this is a pretty significant investment, but you know, if there's any changes or if there's any coordination with Smart or RTA with routes like Livinor, Wyoming, Conan, will this placement for, you know, for a transit center really make sense? That being said, if it is being built, I'd like historic preservation to be front of mind, not demolishing the building. And then I would prioritize a site closer to Woodward. And if, you know, I think there is an added benefit of where it is now with how close it is to Meyer. I think that serves a lot of bus riders. But instead of it being on the side there, I think closer to where the Hamilton bus ends now makes sense and still serves a similar purpose. So in front of the Meyer, not on the side, and possibly closer to Woodward.
It's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else? We don't see any other hands raised. If anybody else wanted to give a comment. Again, I'm going to go ahead and change the slide back to the other ways to give public comment in case people would like to reach us in another format.
So I raised my hand again. Can you hear me?
So again, we will be taking public comment through November 27th. And you can email us, you can mail us directly, or you can give us a phone call in addition to today.
Hello, can we ask another question if we have some more time?
Yep.
Okay, so do the people at DDOT know what the future developments are?
No. So right now, the development sites are not known. The opportunity is for the developer to market it for people to come in.
Okay, but wouldn't that kind of be important to, like, understand the whole idea? I mean, what comes first, the Transit Center or the development? Because when we have many people expressing concerns that there was a lack of notice to a lot of people, including people on the other side of the digital divide, and that there hasn't been even any notices put out on the bus, a very simple thing. And, and that in the vision of the larger scheme of things, we shouldn't move in haste and lose an opportunity to build a world-class transit center, not just because we want it, but, you know, we, we, we need to be getting off the oil, et cetera, et cetera. But, so there's an opportunity, just the history, everything, I mean, I don't know which comes first. So if I hear that DDOT doesn't know what the developments are, then how can you seriously talk about where the Transit Center should be, is the question? And I thank you for giving us more time because I really think it's violating the spirit of things to not allow people to say what they want to say because, you know, people often like lose their train of thought because they're subject to the tyranny of one minute. So I thank you for this. But again, my question is, are you sure DDOT doesn't know what the future developments are?
Yes.
Is that what you said? They don't know?
Yes.
So, okay, that's, okay, there's not one reason to slow this all down?
Thank you. So I'm going to go back and answer some of the other questions that we heard today. One question that I really want to make sure we cover, this is not a replacement for the Rosa Parks Transit Center. This is not a replacement transit center. DDOT has the opportunity to build a new transit center. Just wanted to clarify that because I heard it come up as well. For the Black Club, the person who spoke, Toya from the Black Club, there is information. I'm going to try to get your information to reach out to you directly to make sure we can get you the information. But in addition to that, the information is on our website, which is DetroitMI.gov. And there is a state fair specific webpage that has an FAQ effect sheet to kind of talk about where we are with this project. And then I have some notes for just a couple of the questions that I wanted to answer. So yes, I just want to reiterate, this will be a collaborative effort. We will be working with the other mobility providers in the region. That absolutely includes Smart. And one of my counterparts at Smart is actually on the call, and they've been participating in the hearings and workshops so they can also hear what the conversation is about. So thank you, Smart, for being on the call and participating with us on this. And I'm confident that we will work together well to make sure connections are maintained. So those were the three things I wanted to circle back on. Thank you all for spending your Friday evening with us. We really appreciate it. Again, if you would like to give public comment, there are a couple of other ways to do so, and you have until November 27th. Information will continue to be posted at the State Fair Transit Hub. There are flyers. We will continue to make sure we get resources out there for the riders in the area as well as on our website and on our social media. So thank you again, and everyone have a great evening. John, thank you so much. Kristin Ayabami, thank you as always.